Welcome to Talkin' Waukesha, the podcast where every conversation springs to life.
I'm Andrew Nowke.
And I'm Anthony Terrell.
And we're your hosts for today's journey into the heart of Waukesha.
Whether you're a local or just passing through, join us as we explore the stories, people, and hidden gems that make Waukesha truly special.
From community events to personal anecdotes, we're here to bring you the pulse of our vibrant town.
So grab your favorite beverage, sit back, and let's dive into another episode of Talkin' Waukesha.
Where every conversation springs to life. Welcome back to another episode of Talkin' Waukesha. Today here, we're with Alicia Halvinsleben. Did I say that correctly?
You did.
Yes. She is the alderperson or the council member for District 11, which is all of downtown Waukesha proper. She is also currently the president of the council and is on the ordinance and license board, public library board, and the parade memorial commission. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Starting off kind of, we'll give you a nice softball easy one. What are the primary responsibilities of a city council member for the city of Waukesha?
Sure. So the biggest thing for being a member of the city council is to make sure that you're properly representing your constituents and whether that means making the right decisions at council meetings and at committee meetings, or if that means answering phone calls and writing emails and things like that, just to make sure that you're existing and accessible for your constituents and making sure that what they have to say is heard and processed and taken into consideration when making decisions that are important to the city.
Do you get a lot of phone calls and emails?
Um, a pretty decent amount. I think that, you know, people care about a variety of things that impact them and impact the city that sometimes I can help them with. Sometimes I can't. When I can, I absolutely love it. When I can't, I try to make sure that I give them some sort of an answer so they know what their potential next steps are.
That's great.
And then what kind of additional responsibilities come with being the council president then?
Um, so the main thing is that I take over if the mayor's unavailable. So recently, the mayor was out of town. Well, he wasn't out of town. He was actually representing us for a budget task force meeting. So I shouldn't say out of town so much as unavailable that evening. So I ran the council meeting at that point. And then, yeah, whenever one of us is out of town, we just make sure that we're letting everyone know so that if there's an issue that we know what to do in case something were to happen. God forbid, we hope not, but just in case.
So then can you kind of describe like a typical day in the life as a city council member? I know you kind of went into the little bits of it with answering emails, helping phone calls, and stuff like that for citizens. But I guess what more might there be or kind of the everyday?
Sure. So I think one of the things that a lot of people don't realize about the city council members, at least here in Waukesha, is that we, for the most part, most of us have daytime jobs. So my day typically is get up in the morning and go to my day job. And then it's usually after work that I'm working on things that constituents have called me about, emailed me about, going to committee meetings, going to council meetings and things like that. It also kind of involves some fun things occasionally, ribbon cuttings, the celebrate Waukesha breakfast is always a delight. So yeah, it just kind of depends on the day, but the most, for the most part, my, the beginning of my day probably looks like most people's day.
Yeah. At the end of the day, you're still just a normal person.
I am a normal person.
Yeah. So I think it's one of the nice things about our councils. We have a lot, you know, everyone's got a day job. I think we only have one, one retiree, I think.
I think so.
I think Eric's the only retiree, but it's still, everyone's got such a diverse background too. I mean, you've got white collar job, blue collar job, every, every sort of career path, basically. So there's a lot of experience, you know, business owners, previous business owners. It's makes it, it makes it, the conversations interesting.
Yeah. And I think it's nice to see different perspectives. I can come at something from one background and then I hear my other, you know, fellow council members saying different things and coming at it from a different angle. And I think that that, that makes our council really great.
Yeah, definitely. So what inspired you to run for the city council? And then what are some of the key milestones of your journey so far as, as a council member?
Sure. So I've always been interested in politics, even when I was a little kid. And so, you know, it was kind of one of those things that maybe was in the back of my mind. Maybe someday I'll run for something. I saw an opportunity as we were kind of dealing with COVID and recognizing that I maybe had the time to actually put thought into whether or not I would want to run. I was talking to a lot of people in the community, potential constituents that encouraged me to run. They, they said that they didn't like the way that things were and that they wanted somebody that they knew would listen to them. They knew I was already listening to them before I was elected and trying to help them as much as I could. So I thought, well, maybe I would be the best person to, to represent my, my friends, my neighbors. So I went for it. And, and thankfully I was elected thanks to my constituents. Thank you all for anyone who's listening. But yeah, since then, there's been so much. We have done a lot as a city. I think one of the biggest things that we've done is the parade memorials. I know that we're not quite done yet with the, with the larger of the two, but just seeing the way that the community came together after the parade to support the victims, but then also to support the, the memorial itself, to really make sure that we could see that to fruition. One of my favorite parts about that is seeing all of the tiles that people made. I made one myself, so we can look for that when, when it's all completed. But I really think it was such a great idea. Carmen came up with such a creative way to involve the whole community that I really, really loved. And it was another way for us to raise money as well. So I really look forward to seeing the completed memorial in this, this November.
Yeah, that'll look, that'll look really neat. And I think we just finally wrapped up with the last tile project event, but.
Yeah, that was on Friday.
Another hundred some, I think. We're close to 100 more tiles being added to the list. So yeah, that'll be, that'll be really neat to see everything kind of come together and see everyone's art and their memorials and their dedications all on one wall. So that'll be, I think it's, I don't remember when in November, 21st, 22nd, something like that.
I think it's the 21st.
Yeah. And it was the 20 something.
Yeah. It's an early 20. Check the website for that one.
So I mean, you were saying how to you were a resident and then wanted to get more involved. So I guess there is any other resident out there now, maybe they're listening, how or what ways can they get involved, either just in city governance or just the decision making processes?
Sure. So I think number one, if you have an opinion, make sure that it's known. Reach out to your alderperson, whether it's me or one of my 14 colleagues. That, you know, call us, email us. All of our information is right there on the city website. In addition to that, you can always come to a council meeting or to a committee meeting and make your thoughts known there. I encourage that. If you have something really specific that's on the agenda, it's a great time to make your voice heard by multiple people all at once. If you're not able to make those meetings, you can also always send those thoughts in so they can be read into the record. So I definitely encourage that. But if you're looking for more, we do have the, the local government academy that is available. And you know what? If you really think that you want something different, you should run for office. I definitely encourage folks to, to look into that, whether it's, you know, city council or something else. There are plenty of ways to get involved. We also have appointments for various boards and committees for citizens to get involved. So when there are openings or even if they aren't, if you want, if you're interested, definitely make that interest known so that you can be considered for an appointment.
And those appointments are happening year round. To find more about when the, the meetings are, you can go to waukesha-wi.gov/meetings. There's one other thing. Oh, if you wanted to run, if you go through the, on the city's website underneath government to the clerk treasurer's page, you should be able to find more information about running for office there as well. We talked a little bit about, you know, decision making and, you know, getting involved. How do you approach decision making when it comes to making decisions for boards, commissions, and even the council?
Yeah. So the first thing I'm thinking about is my constituents. So you had mentioned I have the majority of downtown. So that's a little bit different than some of the other areas in the city. And so I try to take that into account, but I also recognize that what I do reflects on the whole city. It's going to affect everyone in the city, no matter what the decisions are. So I have to take that into account too, and really balance that out. And I know that while I have a constituency that elected me, that I'm really here to look out for the best interests of the city and everyone who lives here. And so that's kind of the, the other part of that. I definitely, if I get information, if I get emails or calls about a specific issue, I make sure that I take that into account, do some additional research on my own as well. Looking at city staff recommendations is really helpful. There's a reason that we have city staff. Thank you both. You guys are the experts where maybe some of the council members are not. You definitely know things that I do not know. And this is your day job. So, you know, I mentioned that I have a day job and most of the rest of the council members do, but this is your day job. This is what you do every day, all day. So you're going to be an expert. And so I take that into account as well. And just, yeah, overall, trying to, to balance all of those things to, to find what is the best decision that's going to best help the whole community.
Do you find it challenging that your, your district is kind of in one of those unique situations where you have people who are just leaving home for the first time, you know, single, single member households, multi, not multi-family, but, you know, established family households. You also have a lot of senior living locations as well. Does that throw a wrench or cause some trickiness when it comes to trying to, you know, voice your constituency?
I don't think so, actually. We all live in the same area. So while we might exist in that area slightly differently, we all live in that downtown area or slightly adjacent to it. You know, basically everyone in my district, you know, barring any potential disabilities can probably walk to Main Street. So with that said, I think that there, the concerns that citizens have are probably across the board, pretty similar. You know, the challenges, concerns, the praise as well. Not, not every call is a bad one. And so I think that people recognize that. And yeah, I would say I can get the same type of a call from, yeah, younger, single person living alone. I can get a very similar call from, you know, a senior who's living in assisted living facility, right down to, like you said, you know, a full family with a full house. So yeah, these, these are things that are, a lot of things are universal. They aren't specific to one type of constituency.
So what do you think are some of the biggest challenges currently facing our city? And how is the city council addressing them?
Yeah. So I think one of the things that I have heard a lot about, and I'm sure that we've seen a lot of it in the news and just overall, this seems to be kind of top of the mind. And I had mentioned that the, the mayor was unavailable a couple of months ago because he needed to be at the budget task force meeting. I would say that is one of the biggest challenges that we're facing right now. And that's to say, it's a challenge and not a crisis. And I think that's because we are doing a very good job of getting ahead of things before it becomes a crisis. I think that our relatively new city administrator, Tony Brown, is doing an amazing job of working with city staff, especially directors, to see, okay, what can we do about budgets to address these issues? Where can we get creative about different streams of revenue and things like that? But the biggest thing that I'd like to see is even more improvement on the shared revenue. I think that would be the best thing for us and for, for people in Waukesha. So if you're concerned about this, I would encourage anybody listening to reach out to their legislators and let them know that Waukesha didn't get as good of a deal as maybe we should have and to reexamine that shared revenue.
Yeah. And if you want a little more information, I think we talked about it with Tony Brown, and I think we touched on it a little bit when we talked with Jennifer Andrews as well of shared revenue from the state and Waukesha being a very mature, developed city. And if you want to learn more, feel free to reach out to us. I mean, we're more than happy to help explain this. And I guess when you say reach out to your, your representatives, you're talking more state level.
State level, yes. The, the city council cannot do anything about that, unfortunately.
Not too much. We can, we can talk to the mayor, but you know.
So if you're wondering, you know, why did this happen or why did that happen? And it's something related to the budget, call your legislator.
We're also wondering. We'll have the same questions as you and we just, you know, it seems like we'll have the avenues to talk to better people, but no, we only have slightly more pulled to their ear.
Yes.
So let's go into a couple more fun questions after that delightfully heavier question. So what would you say is the most adventurous thing that you've ever done? And would you do it again?
Um, I know this is going to sound probably pretty lame, but I think I'm also probably a pretty lame person. But one of the most adventurous things I did at the time, so I wouldn't say that this would still be adventurous, but I was going to be studying abroad in Germany when I was in college, so I was 20 years old, and got on a plane for an international flight. I had never left the country before that. Got on a plane by myself, then got on a train by myself and got myself basically all the way to my dorm with, you know, 300 euro in my pocket, ready to, to pay for that dorm when I got there, hoping everything would work out. So yeah, when I think about it now, I'm like, gosh, I was 20 years old and I did all of that on my own. Like, wow. Yeah. So it was great. I would definitely go to Germany again or any other country. I like, I like traveling when I can, pretty busy with stuff. But, you know, if I can get somewhere, I would love to do it again. Go visit my friends who are still there. So that would be great.
Where in Germany did you go?
I was sitting in Erfurt, which is, if you take the fast train, it's about an hour and a half to two hours east of Frankfurt.
Okay.
So it was in the old East Germany, but I was not there when it was East Germany. It was 20 years later.
It always fascinates me too, just European countries, how small they are compared where like you're in Texas, you drive, you take a train, you do whatever, five, six hours, still in Texas.
It's the concept of states that where each state is its own country, in the glimpse of the entire world.
Exactly. Yeah. I would just hop on a train and go anywhere. Like I had, I had class only Monday through Wednesday. It just sort of worked out that way with my schedule. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I would just hop on a train and go somewhere, stay in a hostel with no real plan. Thinking about that now again, I'm just like, how do I do this? 20 years old, what was I thinking? I had friends, so I wasn't by myself, by myself, but yeah.
But yeah, just, just be having that and like, okay, I'm going to go get lost somewhere today. You know, I'll roughly know how I'll get back, but.
Exactly.
Especially doing that in another country where they might not even speak the same language.
How was your German at the time?
It was okay, but their English is way better than my German will ever be.
Oh, perfect. It still sounds, I mean, you, you underplayed it as being adventurous. I think that's very adventurous to love. I'm going to go over there. I have, I have a plan beyond that plan. Who knows?
It seems like that's a common theme that's come from these podcasts is everyone's kind of adventurous thing is going to another country and getting lost. That's what I'm noticing.
Yeah. I've got a goal to do in this country and what I'm going to do is travel.
Exactly. Yep. So next, if you could become an expert in any skill or hobby, what would it be and why?
I think I would love to learn how to sew. Cause I feel like when I rip my pants or something and I, I'm like, oh, now what do I do? I don't know what to do with this. So I have no idea how to sew. I always wanted to learn, just kind of never got around to it as a kid. And so, yeah, I think if I, I don't know if I need to be an expert per se, but I would love to be better at it.
You want like hand stitching or do you like using machine or both or all?
I would, I guess I would just like to be able to fix my clothes if I rip something.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I think the most I can do is fix a hole in my pocket, but then that's about it.
Right. Or, you know, hem some pants. I'm very short, so I'd like to be able to hem pants. If I like these and they're too long now, I just put them back on the rack, but I could say, oh no, I'll just hem them. No problem.
I can utilitarianly sew things back together where it's like, okay, we will mend this hole temporarily until new pair shows up.
Sure.
Or until, you know, until further holes open up and then sorry, these are gone.
I can do a button. That's about it.
I don't trust my, my handiwork for, for sewing long enough. What's the most unusual or interesting job that you've ever had?
I would probably say working for the bookkeeper when I was in high school. What, what we did is what a lot of students probably are aware that it must happen, but the logistics of that happening is maybe not clear. So at the end of the school year, your books are all collected and stacked up. And after the school year is over, there are students who come in and collect all those books and inventory all of them. That's why there are those numbers in there.
Makes sense.
And then at the beginning of the school year, we get a, a number of how many books are needed for each class in each classroom. And we bring them and drop them off. And we had these like big carts that we moved everything around. And I'm like, this is one of those things, right? That every student has to grab their textbook at the beginning of the year and turn it in at the end, but they don't really know what happens in the in between. And so.
Right. You just kind of assume, oh, just probably collected dust on the shelf in the room and then never left.
Right. Like, why do we have to sign, you know, our name? And we keep track of that stuff. So.
And it's kind of cool at some point too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I got to see like all these different parts of the school that you wouldn't normally see, you know, different storage closets and things that are always locked, but somehow wide open in the middle of summer and hang out with the teachers who are cleaning up their classrooms. So there were a lot of kind of other aspects to the job that were a lot of fun.
And it seems like it's a super relevant topic at the time too, because I mean, I just started seeing on Instagram, all these teachers like, oh, we have to go back to school now and, you know, get dressed and wear your normal clothes and dress up. Like, yep, summer's almost over, you know, in a weird way, but.
No, I think I would end up seeing some of the students like that, especially in high school when I was in marching band, because we were then kind of there towards the end of the summer in the, before school had started. So we, I would definitely see those students moving those carts. And I'm just thinking, they're just moving the carts. They're not actually organizing the books and making sure. I was thinking the teachers were doing that.
We were in this like huge back room with all of these books and making sure they were sorted into the right place. Cause yeah, how do you get 30 textbooks to each class?
It also sounds like a workout too.
Oh my gosh, it was a great workout.
So what is something about yourself that most people might not know?
Um, oh my goodness. I don't know. I feel like I'm usually a pretty open book. So, well, maybe that's what it is. I really enjoy reading. I'm part of a book club. So like, I enjoy reading for fun, not just reading our packets before our council meetings and everything. So yeah, no, I actually really enjoy reading. I like reading just about every kind of book. So I'll read, you know, a paranormal romance, but I'll also read, you know, some nonfiction book about, you know, the Gilded Age. So yeah, I'm, I'm all over the board and my book club is too, which is really fun because it exposes me to different types of books. So.
Kind of piggybacking off that, what book, movie or TV show? And I'll, we can go with and/or TV show. Are you currently enjoying?
Well, I mean, what did I watch last night? It was definitely House of the Dragon, obviously.
Dragon Tales is on.
So I actually read all of the books that were out. So there, I know the series is not completed, but I really liked the Song of Ice and Fire series from George R. Martin. And I watched all of Game of Thrones and I was very disappointed in the final season like everyone else. So it was, I was wary when they said, oh, we've got a new series. I was curious and House of the Dragon has been really great. And last night's episode did not disappoint. No spoilers.
That's fine. Yeah. I'm, I'm still stuck on the first season because you know, like, oh, we need to ditch HBO Max for a year and then come back to it again. So I'm also a fan of starting it much later because we watched Game of Thrones two years after it finished and just watched through everything. So there's no disappointment of that waiting time. So it still was weird, but.
It's nice to be able to binge stuff, but at the same time, the internet is dark and full of spoilers.
Oh, a hundred percent. I knew, I knew a lot of the, the, the dark, the dark things that happened because of the internet.
Yeah.
There's also just like a magic too of watching it as the world is watching it too and seeing everyone talk about it. I think there is even like a Instagram reel that I had seen where when Game of Thrones was coming out, someone was in like New York, looking up at this apartment building and you could see all the windows were in sync with their lighting because they were all watching Game of Thrones.
I think one of my favorite things when Game of Thrones was on was the reaction reels and videos, because it would be people like me who had read the books and knew what was coming. And then a partner or friend or whoever that had not read the books. So, you know, they're standing in the corner like filming their friend and what, you know, I know what's coming. I, I can hear the music, the Rings of Castamere playing. So yeah, that was, I really enjoyed those, especially as a book reader. So.
And then what, what, what books are you currently enjoying?
Right now I am reading, I'm reading one of the books in the Hades and Persephone series. So that is, it's a romance, but it's based on the Hades and Persephone mythology, but it's set in modern times. So like she, she works for a newspaper and he owns a club and, you know, so it's kind of, it's kind of odd, but it's interesting. It's really, it's a pretty good book. And then my book club book, it's called Do Your Worst. I believe it's kind of a cozy romance about an archaeologist and a curse breaker. Yeah.
It's an interesting combo. And then, you know, obviously you're on the, the library board. Are you getting these books from the library?
Yes. I get most of my books from the library and I actually do most of them through Libby or Hoopla, because I prefer to read electronic books because then they're always with me. You know, some of these books these days are really thick and they don't fit in my purse. So if I have them on my phone, it's a lot easier.
See, I know I'm a younger guy, but I tried reading a thicker book on an airplane and just based on how big I am on being on a plane, I couldn't read it because it was too close to my face. So it's nice with, with like Kindles and stuff. I can put it further away from my face because I don't have to worry about, you know, a thousand page book being too close. And I could also change the font size a little bit too. And
Which is nice. You change the background and all of that.
It's got some green, some green features too, you know?
And then I'm over here with audiobooks because I'm dyslexic. So it's very hard for me to read.
I do both actually. So the Hades and Persephone series, I'm reading that one audiobook and then the other one I'm reading on my Kindle. So I usually have two books going at a time.
Okay. That's nice.
Now, since you both do audiobooks, do you find it harder to enjoy a book that has a bad storyteller?
Like the narrator?
The narrator, yeah.
Yeah, it definitely, that definitely can make or break it. I know some of the books that I have read recently. So one of the ones was the sequel to Ready Player One, Ready Player Two. It was read by Will Wheaton. So he's also a nerd too. So you could tell he's got the enthusiasm while reading it as well. So that usually helps, but there are ones where the people are very just, I'm reading this for the paycheck. And it's like, oh, okay. This isn't as exciting.
Yeah. It definitely makes it harder to get through the book.
All right. So what job, other than your current job, would you love to try?
You know, when I was a kid, I really wanted to be a lawyer. And then, you know, I was finishing up college and going to law school just was not the right thing for me. And then I, you know, got a different job and was doing that. That kind of followed another job and another job. And now I've been with the company that I'm with for eight and a half years. So I don't think it's ever going to happen, but it was always kind of one of those things in the back of my head. But then again, that's what I said about running for office and here I am. So who knows?
If you could time travel, would you go to the past or the future? And then the addendum we've always started adding is if, for either option, how far in the future or how far in the past?
So the correct answer is to go to the future. Because we know like, you know, diseases and medical science, that alone should keep you out of the past. But you asked a history major, so I'm going to have to go with the past.
I'm glad you came back around for that one.
Yeah, no, I, I love, I love history. I don't even know if I could pick an era because I am so interested in so many of them. I think if I wanted to be a fly on the wall, maybe anytime during the Tudor era. I really love the whole Tudor era. It's not just Henry the eighth, the whole thing, starting with Henry the seventh, straight through to Elizabeth. I think it's fascinating. You know, I think that Bloody Mary got a bad rap because her dad was way worse. And, you know, so I would just, I would love to see that. And also because it was kind of one of those first times that women were able to really seize power. And I love, I would love to see how that really played out and what was going on behind the scenes that we don't necessarily know from the history books.
Yeah. So I struggle with Elizabeth, not Elizabeth, then let's try this again, England eras compared to the rest of the world. How does that compare to like Catherine the Great? And is that pre or post Catherine?
So Catherine the Great would be later. Yeah. So we're talking, you know, more of the 1500s. Catherine the Great is more of the 1700s. But kudos to Catherine the Great for getting the smallpox inoculation situation going. Cause yeah, I think that that was one of the best things that she did in her reign. I didn't know if that was a test or not.
It wasn't.
You could have said anything and I would have believed you.
If my wife listens to this episode, she's going to be strongly disappointed that I don't remember when the Tudors are.
All right. So kind of on the same idea of time travel, if you could go back in time and tell your younger self some words of advice, what would you say?
Uh, I would probably say be confident in yourself, that things are going to get better. I was a pretty nerdy kid. I mean, I guess I'm probably still a nerdy adult, but I think it's more acceptable if you're an adult.
In a weird way, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think because when you're an adult, you can pick what you do, who you spend your time with. When you're a kid, you're stuck with the people who are at school with you. And so, yeah, I was kind of an odd kid. I read a lot and, you know, was really excited about history in a weird way. And so I think I would just say, go for it. Be confident, be who you are. When, you know, when you're older, it's going to be so much better for you. Cause I think, I bet a lot of people would say that to their younger selves, right? Like a lot of people had down moments when they're younger, right? With beliefs and other things, I'm sure. So I think that's probably good advice for most of us to give to ourselves is to be more confident and really believe in ourselves.
Just embrace, yeah, embrace who you are. You don't have to change yourself for anyone else. Just if you want to be weird, be weird.
Yeah.
I was thrilled being weird as a kid. Like, I mean, we, we, we pride ourselves in having a little nerdy corner outside the library and to a point where like people would come by and ask us for homework help. It's like, yeah, we know where the nerds are because they're right there next to the library.
Exactly.
As long as you got your people to go with, then it makes it a lot easier. I mean, yeah, I was a band geek. So I had the other band geeks and it went well.
I was, yeah, forensics and debate team. We all hung out together. So.
So going back to Waukesha a little bit more, it's kind of going to be a tricky one of asking you like almost who your favorite child would be, but what's your favorite thing about Waukesha as a whole? And then what's your favorite thing about downtown Waukesha?
Yeah. I had, I had to think about this one. I've made notes. I gotta find it. Okay. So one of my favorite things about the whole city is really the sense of community, the sense of belonging. I think that the. I think that the parade tragedy reminded us of something that we already knew and showed the world something great about Waukesha, and that is the ability to truly come together. I know that, you know, we talk a lot and we hear a lot from the media about how divisive everything is nowadays. And I don't feel that way in Waukesha. I'll be perfectly honest. I don't feel that way about my fellow council members. I don't feel that way when I'm out and about in the community. I feel like when I'm having a conversation, even if there's something where I might disagree with somebody, um, it's still really civil and we can still hug and, and say goodbye in a friendly way. And I love that about Waukesha. I think that it's really unique. I don't know if that's something that exists everywhere, but it's definitely something that exists here. And when I, uh, made the decision to move here permanently, that, that was definitely something that was in the back of my mind. And that was over a decade ago at this point. So had nothing to do with the parade. I know we, we talk a lot about it in the wake of the parade tragedy, but um, I think it's something that's always been here. Um, and I'm, I'm hope, I hope it's here to stay forever.
Yeah. And actually, as you were describing it, like the way, the way my mindset thought about like how you're talking about the community is we're like stereotypically Midwestern.
Yeah, yeah. Everyone's really nice here.
Friendly, you know, you know, yes, everyone's going to have their political divides and their, their sports teams divides and everything. But you know, it's still like, you can talk with anyone and as long as they're not having a bad day or they really just need to kind of have a, you know, be alone. Everyone's cheery, pretty happy and.
Right. Even when you have that lone Bears fan sitting at mainstream, trying to watch the game, you're like, okay, I'm going to give you some side eye, but I'm not, I'm not going to yell at you.
I could tease plenty of it for being a Bears fan already. So.
I knew that might've been mentioned.
I'm not at mainstream though. I sit quietly at home and just smile.
Uh, what is the most interesting or surprising fact about the city that you've learned about?
Um, I think one of my favorite interesting facts about the city is our really strong suffragette history. Um, as we were, uh, kind of coming into the hundredth anniversary of the nineteenth amendment, uh, the historical museum had this really great, uh, exhibit, I guess, uh, showcasing the, the suffragette history here in Waukesha. So not just Wisconsin, but here in Waukesha. Uh, to the point where we have a park named after a famous suffragette, um, Theater of Humans Park, uh, which is in my district actually. Uh, and, and a wonderful little park. Uh, it's beautiful and it's right by the Avalon if people aren't sure where it is.
And she's also buried at Prairie Home Cemetery.
Yes. Yes. So I, I really love that. Uh, I, I love, yeah, obviously I love women in politics. So uh, maybe I'm a little biased, but I just, I think that that's fascinating that, that, you know, little old Waukesha, right? We have this amazing history there.
Yeah. There's a lot, a lot of kind of, not necessarily hidden history, but, um, little jewels of history that, that pop up every now and then that you, I keep seeing and finding.
Yeah. I mean, everybody knows us for Les Paul. Um, you know, everybody knows the Spring City era, right? These are things that we're kind of constantly reminded of. But there's those other little things, those jewels of history that, uh, yeah, you're not necessarily hidden. Uh, they're there in plain sight, right? We have a park. But, uh, not something necessarily everybody's always constantly reminded of.
And that's something we'd even talked about too, is, is trying to do a little, little video series on what are these parks named after? What's the, you know, who's the person behind the name? Like
I love that idea.
Who's Cutler? And just kind of digging a little bit more into that and hopefully little, little bite sized pieces of, of history from there.
I did the ghost tours and I learned a lot from those. They, they have a pretty good like sense of history. So that's really fascinating.
Cheesy as they may be, they, the little history bits you learn from them are always.
Very cheesy, but absolutely wonderful. The, the, the man who hosts them apparently really likes my cat. Cause he sometimes runs by my house and sees my cat in the window.
I mean, it makes sense. A guy liking a black cat. So. Um, so who would you say has been the biggest mentor, uh, or influence for your career?
Um, this is probably going to sound so cliche, uh, but I would say number one is my mother. Uh, my mother has been such a great influence on me. She's been such a great motivator. She's the one that when I'm not sure of myself, I'll call her and she's like, I don't know why you're not sure of yourself. You're, you're going to be great at this or that, the other thing. Uh, you know, called her when I was going to ask for a promotion from my boss and she's like, yeah, go for it. You should totally do it. Twenty minutes later, I'm like, yeah, my boss is down for this. So you know, she's been there from the beginning. Uh, she's always really taken care of me and, and made sure that I felt confident in everything that I was doing. Um, but I would probably follow that up with, um, my debate coach from high school, uh, Adam Jacoby. And I hope that he hears this at some point, but, uh, he was such a great influence on helping me to become a better speaker, more confident speaker. To make sure that when I am speaking, it's well researched and well thought out. So I, I really appreciate all of the, the advice and help that he gave, whether it was in debate and forensics practice or in the theater classes that I was taking with him. Um, he was just a really great influence. And I know that he's done so much, uh, across the state for a lot of students. And so I'm guessing that I'm not the only one in, in the state of Wisconsin that would say that.
That's a fantastic combination of debate and theater.
Yeah.
Cause really, really a lot of debate and forensics does come down to, I mean, short of, short of like throwing a little bit more psychology with it, like that would be like the perfect, like theater and psychology of how do you get your point across, get it up across well? And then also.
And then just speaking, just to in front and just being able to, yeah, carry that confidently.
Exactly. Yeah. I, I did not do the more theatrical type categories. I did more of the current events and, and those sorts of things. But, um, you know, I enjoyed the theater classes. Nonetheless, it was good exercise. Some of the like improv type exercises are always fun, I think for anyone.
Yeah. I think, I think improv is one thing that everyone could use at least one class and of just, just the, you know, just the understanding of the yes and, and that's the, it's almost a good mentality of life of like, don't just tell people no. You can say yes, but, but you can't say no, but.
Right, right. Yeah. Um, and you know, just being silly. Uh, you know, I think that sometimes we can take ourselves too seriously. And so to have that little reprieve in the middle of the day to go and, and yeah, just be silly with other students and we all have to be silly at the same time. So no one looks extra silly.
You get over a little bit of the awkwardness, get beyond the, that, that, that hump of like, I don't want to do this because I don't want to look stupid. Like everyone's going to look stupid in front of each other.
Everyone looks stupid, no one looks stupid.
Exactly, exactly.
So then maybe from one of those mentors too, that you'd mentioned, was there any, you have a best piece of advice that you ever received?
I know that I kind of said, this is what I would tell myself, uh, when I was younger, but I, I think that my mom telling me that things would be better when I'm an adult. She's like, you are building all of this up so that you can be amazing when you're an adult. And I think that, that really stuck with me. Um, because you know, everyone has those challenging moments in middle school, high school, college. Maybe even after college, when you're kind of struggling, you're in your early twenties and you're just trying to figure everything out. My mom kept telling me, she's like, there's more to come. Things will be better. Things are going to be amazing. You're going to do great things. And just have somebody that was there that was believing in me and telling me something. Um, and then, you know, as I got older, I realized that is true. Things, things do get better. And I think in everyone's life, there are ups and downs and that's okay too. But, um, I think knowing that things did eventually get better and, and I really found my place in the world. Um, even now, if there is a little bit of a stumble, I feel like it's okay. This is just a little dip. We're going to go right back up again. It's going to be fine. Uh, so that advice has really stayed with me to help me through times that
Yeah.
I think we've all gone through where there's maybe just that little dip.
Yeah. I think, I mean, the thing I've, I've more and more recently realized is that even though it's a little dip, it may take a month, it may take two months, but it's still only like a little, a small portion of your life is, is going through a little bit of hardship and then
Right.
you'll bounce back at some point and
Exactly. Ten years later, it will be a nothing burger.
Yeah. All right. I think it's time for rapid fire questions.
Rapid fire questions. All right. Nothing is going to be too controversial or too crazy or too anything. So.
Well, there's, there's one that's always.
Well, we'll see.
I don't know which one it is, but there's always one.
So, so no pressure on any of these. All right. Are you an early bird or night owl?
I would probably say night owl, but I don't sleep in super late.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Coffee or tea?
So I actually usually don't drink either. If I had to pick, I would say water.
Okay.
All right. That's controversial. And there you go.
Uh, favorite season of the year?
Uh, fall, hands down. I'm ready for Walktober already.
Uh, what is your go-to comfort food?
Pizza, a hundred percent. Love it.
What's the go-to topping then?
I love my sausage and pepperoni, pretty basic, but always good.
What's, what's your go-to Waukesha pizza place?
Ooh, okay. Controversial. I would say if I'm bringing home a pizza to eat at home, love Sal's. I think Sal's pizza is somehow like that perfect Midwestern square cut pizza. Um, but if I'm downtown, I'm probably hitting Magellan's.
Love those options.
And if you're ready for a coma, then you go and get yourself a panza.
But yes.
Someone was telling me that a panza contains one brick of cheese per panza and I believe it.
Hundred percent. I believe that.
It's delicious coma food.
And they're, and they're really cheap actually.
Yeah, they're, they're affordable.
Yeah. They're like, it's almost inexcusable.
Yeah. I was looking at it the other day and I was like, oh, these are only that, this price. And I was like, okay, I need to get myself another one.
If you want to make yourself feel a little better, you go with the pepperoni and then you add in pineapple. Cause they're at least in the fruit inside of it. But that's also my controversy of, you know, pineapple.
Pizza, that would be a controversial question.
All right. Cats or dogs?
Cats. I have one beautiful cat. Her name is Sylvia and I love her very much.
Favorite holiday?
Uh, Halloween.
Okay. Uh, do you enjoy more savory or sweet?
Uh, probably more savory.
Favorite sport to watch and/or play?
Um, literally just the Packers. I'm not a sports person, but I do love watching the Packers.
Favorite ice cream flavor?
Cookie dough.
Good choice.
Is there a specific variety of cookie dough?
Uh, well, chocolate chip, cookie dough, bites.
It's not quite what I was going for.
You're thinking like cookies and cream kind of.
No, I was thinking like, uh, brand. The brand was the word I could not come up with.
Well, usually I go to Culver's and I get a concrete mix, a concrete mixer with cookie dough bites in it. And I usually I'll do double. Cause then I'm basically just eating cookie dough.
All right. I think that is the supreme answer.
Would you classify yourself as more an introvert or extrovert?
Uh, I'm definitely an extrovert, but I think when I was younger, I was a little bit more of an introvert.
Uh, what's your favorite type of music?
I will listen to just about anything. Um, even country. I'm not a big fan of a lot of country, but there, there are some good ones out there. And I mean, I just took my dad to see Shania Twain, uh, like actually last Halloween. Uh, for his sixtieth birthday and we had a really great time. So yeah, I would listen to just about anything.
I always like how when people give that answer, it's, I'll listen to almost anything, even country. Incentivizing that like coun-, we all know country is the one that we don't like.
Country's its own thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of its own, it's its own entity. Um, so I wouldn't say like I'm this huge country fan, but, uh, you know, enough that I went to a Shania Twain concert and had a really good time. So.
Uh, favorite color?
Uh, purple. I love purple.
Friday purple or just purple?
Just purple.
I have to ask him. It's a, it's a graphic design thing.
I mean, I can give you the hex code.
That's, that's exactly what I was like.
I have it somewhere. I'll give it to you later.
And then candies, do you prefer more fruity candies? You'd like more of the chocolate candies?
I would say, oh, it really depends on the time of day. I feel like if it's at night, I want chocolate. If it's during the day, I like the fruity candy. And that's usually because I feel like it lasts longer. So if I'm looking for that little boost, you know, that like two PM slump, when I'm just trying to get through the rest of the day and I just need that little sugar rush. You know, it's nice. Jolly Rancher is perfect for that.
Or what about like Halloween? You get your, your basket full of candy. What's the first thing you're looking for?
Probably Snickers bar. Would have been Butterfinger, but they changed that recipe.
They, they tweaked it back a little bit again, so it's, it's passable, but it was real bad before.
Yeah, it's not what it was when I was younger. So that would have been my answer. But yeah, Snickers bar or Reese's peanut butter cups. Those are my top two.
And then what candy are you throwing back then?
Um, Almond Joy.
Almond Joy?
By that, I mean, I'm just handing it to my boyfriend because he loves them.
That's fair. Yeah. We would always get home from Halloween and we'd take whatever candy we didn't want, put it back in the, the basket to hand out to kids and
There you go.
Send it right back out the door.
Well, yeah, you know, when you're sitting there, you know, you're eating some while you're handing it out and you're eating all the
Two for the kids, three for me.
Exactly, exactly.
What advice would you give to someone who's interested in running for local office or getting involved in, in public service?
I think if you're interested, uh, you should reach out to your local representative, whether the, whether that's your council member. If you're thinking about higher office, maybe talking to your legislators, uh, and just getting an idea of what it is that they do all day long. Uh, because maybe you might change your mind or maybe you get even more excited. But, uh, if you do decide that you want to move forward, you're going to sound more informed on the campaign trail. If you know it, know what it is that you're going to be doing.
Right.
Um, and they can also, you know, give you an idea of what it's going to be like, right? So both on the campaign side and once you get elected, if you do.
Yeah. And especially because every community is going to have a different community or a different council makeup. I mean, you've got Milwaukee where they've got full-time ones. You've got here where it's, it's, I'm not saying it's not a time commitment. It's still
It is a time commitment.
Eight hours a weekend of meetings potentially.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
And then you've got smaller communities where it's, it may be a one, three hour meeting every two weeks.
Yeah, no, it definitely depends. I, I know, um, council members from different communities all over the state. And yeah, we all have a slightly different experience and how things go.
So then last question, how can residents best support the efforts of the city council?
Um, I think that hearing your opinions is really good, whether it's a positive or negative opinion about something. Um, I think when there's a negative opinion, everyone is pretty quick to, to make that call or send that email. But it's always nice to hear something positive. If you're really enjoying something, that way we know we're doing a good job. Cause if we don't hear anything, it's not always, we're not sure.
Right.
Uh, so if you are in support of something, you can write a letter about that too. You can, you can make a phone call about that too. Um, we want to hear from you. Uh, we want your feedback. So, so please reach out to us, um, or, you know, show up for public comment. And say, you're very much in favor of this, this new ordinance that we're proposing or whatever it might be. Um, because yeah, that's going to make a difference. We definitely do hear you. We listen to you. Um, and, and just for some clarification, if you do come in for public comment, we're not allowed to talk to you. So don't feel like we're not hearing you. We absolutely are. Um, if you want to have more of a direct dialogue, then reach out to us directly. We'd be more than happy to talk to you.
I remember that being one of the conversations and it's, it's, it's a tricky one. I, I mean, listening to the entire conversation of can we talk to people during public comments? Like, well, they're only allowed so much time and then you don't want to monopolize too much of that public comment time as well. So.
Well, and we want to make sure that there's, um, good feedback on both sides. So there's a reason why we have an agenda that's posted ahead of the meeting and it's so that if people, if there's something on the agenda, people who have a vested interest can make their, their opinions known. Uh, if we just sort of start bringing random stuff up in public comment that can lead to a potentially one-way conversation. And that isn't necessarily what's best for the whole community. So when you're wondering why that is, uh, there is a good reason. And, and it's not because we don't want to talk to you. We absolutely do. There are other ways to have a real dialogue.
Yeah. I mean, even when there's, when the council chambers is full and there's tons of people that have things to say, it's, it can get overwhelming for everyone on both sides, but it's important for that everyone voices what they need to, what they want to see out of their, their community leaders.
Absolutely.
Well, that's all we've got for you today. Thank you so much for, for being on Talkin' Waukesha.
Thank you. This was a really great experience though. Thanks for having me on. I really appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you for being here. And that's a wrap for another episode of Talkin' Waukesha. We hope you enjoy diving into the heart of our city with us.
If you have a story to share or just want to say hello, reach out to us on social media at City of Waukesha on Facebook. We love hearing from our listeners.
Don't forget to subscribe, rate and leave a review. If you enjoyed the conversation, it really helps us spread the word.
As always, thanks for tuning in to Talkin' Waukesha, where every conversation springs to life.